On you At major climate conferences. Hi, I'm Anula. Thank you for being a part of this session and we look forward to your insights and the section and how you know youth can contribute meaningfully in the NDCs process. Before I hand it over to you, I just also want to kind of briefly take all the participants through what is the flow of the event today. So just for a quick brief background, NDCs is basically nationally determined contribution. And it follows and comes from the Paris Agreement wherein we wherein the wherein we basically talk about the the temperature average global temperatures rise needs to be below 1.5 degrees by 2030. And thereafter, all countries who have agreed on the Paris Agreement are supposed to come up with their own NDCs. And similarly, all countries have their own NDCs and they submit revised and updated NDCs next year. You know, for for revisit of Paris Agreement that happens every five years. More on to what we will do today is basically, we have a we have a 13 minutes session with Amanullah will be taking us through what is NDCs and how you know youth can engage. And then we'll have breakout room activity wherein we'll do a small role play activity of mapping, tracking, tracking and reviewing of the NDCs. Then we'll be following following it by a small closing discussion and a Q and A session. So that's mostly today's flow of Amanullah. The floor is all yours again. Once again, thank you for joining in and we look forward to your insights on NDCs.
Hello. Thank you for that wonderful introduction. I hope I'm audible. Yeah, thank you. So hello, everyone. My name is Parag. I usually go by Parag. And I'm from Bangladesh. I'm B5 and I am just like Achinta say, I'm a climate rights activist. That means I look at the climate crisis issue from a human rights lens and try and connect climate crisis with how it is a human rights crisis. So before we dive into the discussion, I have a quick activity. Can I share my screen? Yeah, I can. I hope my screen is so we are gonna do a quick Mentimeter activity. I'm sure you guys know about Mentimeter. So one second. So this is the QR for the Mentimeter. Just scan it or go to mentimeter.com and put the code. And there's also a link that the team can share with you so that you can have direct access to the Mentimeter. And open the now. Is is my mind visible? Yeah, I can already see a lot of people writing. So the first question is, where are you from? It's just to know about where are you from? So feel free to hide your inputs and you can also see the code on my screen. Just join in and I'll share your answers. I can see a lot of people responding. Here's the QR again if you guys missed it. So just scan the QR or go to mentimeter.com and provide your inputs. So we already have 33 responses and I can see a lot of our friends are from India. We have someone from Guinea. We have someone from Sri Lanka. And we have someone from Nepal. We have people from USA. Well, it's a very diverse audience, I must say. Okay, we have a lot of responses. So maybe we can stop this question right here because I have another question for you guys. Which is on a scale of one to 10, how confident are you about your country's national climate action plans? It can be any climate action plan of your country or it can be overall plans that you know about. So how confident are you about your country's national climate action plans? Firstly, I put myself somewhere between one and three. But let's see, where do you guys put your country in? Six is is winning and also two wow. Oh, there's the two. Okay, my mistake. But yeah, it looks like most of us are somewhere between five and six. So somewhere in the middle and somewhere average. So we're not all very confident about our country's national climate action plans. We have a lot of responses actually. Forty people have joined. Sorry, this is the free version of Mentee. So only 50 people could join. And when I was preparing the Mentee, I had to try it once. So the number of people can join is 49. Okay, I think I think we are good. So yeah, this was just to get an overview of how confident are we regarding our national climate action plans? Thank you. I'll go back to our main slides now. So I'm I'm still audible. Yeah, great. Thank you, Achinta. So moving on. Before we come into the discussion, I'm sure you all know about these keywords already. But just to remember some important keywords, there is UNFCCC, which is the United Framework Convention on Climate Change. There is COP Conference of Parties, Parties, who are the signatory countries to UNFCCC. Paris Agreement, which was the outcome of COP21 and then Glasgow Climate Pack, which was one of the outcomes of COP26. So just remember these QR keywords, which so that you understand the next discussion easily. So what is NDC? So I I heard from our friends from U3 COP team that we have already discussed about Paris Agreement. So which is great, which is which makes my work easier now. So as you may know, the main goal of the Paris Agreement was to keep our global temperature rise well below 2 degrees Celsius and around 1.5 degrees Celsius by 2030, right? So NDCs are the commitments that our country have made to achieve that goal of keeping our global temperature rise around 1.5 by 2030. These are national commitments. And these commitments are made by all of the parties who signed the Paris Agreement. And another purpose of the NDCs were also to better adapt to climate change. So in short, NDCs are like national movements towards achieving our goal of 1.5 by 2030. And moving on, NDCs are also known as the National Climate Plans because I can in the NDCs, all the countries outline their action plan to tackle climate change in their trees in a short term and in a medium term time period. And all the plans that a country has to mitigate or adapt to climate change and also to achieve the goal of Paris Agreement. All of them are combined and compiled into their each of the countries' NDCs. So NDCs are also known as the National Climate Action Plans of the countries. NDCs are also called the Mother Document. There are two reasons why. So as we may know, the two major processes of tackling climate change is adaptation and mitigation, right? So NDCs has both. NDCs are the plans or the documents where each of the countries set their targets and their plans to mitigate from global mitigate from greenhouse gas emissions and to decrease their carbon emissions. And at the same time, NDCs also outline and and how they want to better prepare to adapt to the consequences of climate change. So in short, NDCs has both mitigation and adaptation. That's why NDCs are also called the Mother Documents. Moving on, this is a brief timeline of NDCs. So as you may know, Paris Agreement being adopted in 2015 and Paris Agreement is the agreement that actually stepped a framework for NDCs and all the countries from Paris Agreement, all the countries started preparing their initial NDCs. I mean, the first round of NDCs and by 2020, all the countries had submitted their initial NDCs, which are also known as the INDCs. And moving on to 22, all the parties gathered in Glasgow and revisited their NDCs. Because the initial NDCs, they were just not strong enough to hit our target of 1.5. So all the countries came together and revisited and restrained their NDCs as a part of the Glasgow Climate Pact. And in 2023, the first round of global stocktake happened. I'm sure you guys already know about global stocktake. And the first round of global stocktake took a look at where we are standing with our NDCs in 2023 and how much progress we have made. What are our gaps? What are lacking in order to achieve, in order to create an ambitious NDCs for us? And in 2025, just like Achinta mentioned, 2025 is the year we are calling Year of People's NDCs. Because in 2025, in the first quarter of 2025, all the countries to submit their revised NDCs and all the countries and all the people, everyone is hoping that this time the NDCs will be NDCs for the people. That's why 2025 is the year of people's NDCs. Moving on, just like I mentioned in the slide, that 2025 is the year of people's NDCs. Why is that? Because NDCs are ratchet mechanism. And by that, what I mean is when thing is ratchet, it means it has to be better than the previous version. And NDCs follows that mechanism. A key principle of the Paris Agreement was that every country needs to increase their efforts every five years to reflect that, yeah, they are ambitious and they are on their highest possible ambitiousness. So that's why NDCs are ratchet mechanism, which means it has to be better than the previous one. And to inform you guys, NDCs are updated every five years. Which means the NDCs, the countries submitted back in 2020 and the NDCs, the countries submitted submitted in 2022. The next round has to be better than those two and the next round has to be more ambitious than the previous ones. Moving on, NDCs are usually made with three key components, which are the mitigation targets, the adaptation measures and the MRV. We'll get to those later on. But the first component of an NDC are the mitigation targets. I'm sure you already stand by the name itself, what mitigation targets means. It means the country's targets to reducing their greenhouse gas emissions and to meeting from the use of greenhouse gas emissions and carbon emissions. Mitigation targets are set in four criterias, which are overall targets, specific mitigation targets, conditional mitigation targets and unconditional mitigation targets. So overall mitigation targets mean that it's a country's overall commitment of how much carbon emission or how much GHG emission reduction they want to do. For example, a nation, for example, my country may want to commit that we want to increase our global, we want to increase our GHG emissions by 30% compared to what we used to emit back in 2010. So this is a country's overall target, including everything. It's a overall number of our decreasing our carbon emissions and GHG emissions. And there is the next one is the specific mitigation measure. Specific means the target you have set in your overall mitigation reduction, your overall GHG reduction. It's a specific part of that overall number. For example, let's say, like I mentioned, my country wants to reduce our carbon emissions 30% compared to 2005 levels. And by 30%, the number can be, let's say, 100 million ton. So the 100 million ton is our overall reduction target. And let's say among those 100 million, I want to specifically reduce 20 million ton in my country's energy sector. So you see, that's our specific target of reduction. The specific targets can be set differently for each of the sectors. Your specific target can be something for your transportation and something else for your agriculture. So it depends on countries' demands and a country's, let's say, what's that thing, interest. And then there is the conditional mitigation target. So for countries like us, mitigation is not an easy process, right? And we, those of us who are still developing countries, we need external support to mitigate and to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. So conditional mitigation targets are those targets which are really achieved when some certain conditions are met. And most of the times, those conditions are external support such as funding and technical support. For example, let's say, I mentioned before, my country's overall target was 100 million ton, right? So I'll say that among these 100 million ton will reduce 50 million ton if I get this specific amount of funding support from external entities. If I get this support from external entities. So these targets depend on different conditions. And finally, the unconditional mitigation targets are the targets that you will anyways, with or without any financial or any technical support. And then there are the adaptation strategies. Just words, these are the strategies our countries set in their NDCs to, you know, better adapt to climate change and to better adapt to climate crisis. And the third key component of NDCs is the MRV process. MRV means monitoring, reporting and verification. So let's say, I set a target. I'm a country. I'm setting a target in my NDC. But who's gonna verify that, yeah, I am actually setting a right target and I'm meeting my target? So that verification is done through the MRV process. MRV process usually includes collecting data and, you know, verifying the truth of the data, doing on-ground researches, doing on-ground reporting. And most of the times, this verification is done, not countries, but external bodies and international bodies. For example, let's say, in my country, the MRV is usually done by UNDP. UNDP is one of our lead funders to achieve our NDCs. So this is the third key component of NDCs, monitoring, reporting and verification. Moving on, one question might arise that how are NDCs funded? Where does the money come from? As these are such huge, such ambitious as, they definitely require a lot of money, right? So where does the money come from? So the funding for NDCs come from three main domain domains. The first one is domestic public finance, which is when the government allocates its own budget or the government allocates its own money, its people's money to achieving the NDCs, right? So that is called the domestic public finance. Domestic public finance are usually policy changes, tax incentive or direct investments of the governments towards energy infrastructure and sustainable agricultural practices and or maybe climate resilient infrastructures. Then second domain is international public finance. So international public finances are when a country gets money from different national bodies or different international agencies to achieve their NDCs. So these mainly include two things, two entities. First one is multilateral climate funds. As you guys might have already heard about CBF, not CBF, the GEF, which is the Global Environmental Facility. Then there is the Green Climate Fund. These are international or multilateral climate funds that provide money to countries to achieve their NDCs or specific things of their NDCs. And then there is the bilateral aids, which is country to country support. For example, if my country is doing something and it needs some help, Sweden come in aid and they might provide us some bilateral aid, you know, to achieve our goals of NDCs. And then the last one is private sector investment. And in private sector investment, there are two main things. First is direct investments. Direct investments are usually made by different corporations and mostly different multilateral banks. For example, let's say World Bank or ATB or other international multilateral banks. These are the banks that provide direct investments as a private entity to our country to achieve their NDCs. Most of the times, these investments come in form of loans. And then there is green bonds. Green bonds are a type of measure which is taken when a country receives money in exchange of work, in exchange of progress. For example, let's say my country is taking, asking for a loan from World Bank to, you know, do achieve our adaptation strategies. So what my country has to do is, my country needs to show regular progress in that adaptation strategy and in the implementation process to receive the money from this green bond. So these are three main ways a country's NDC is funded. And moving on the global stocktake, and I already know that you guys have had a session on global stocktake, but just to again memorize, global stocktake are the is the process where all the countries' NDCs and commitments together are evaluated to see where we are standing. How much progress have we made and how back we have fallen and what are our gaps and what are our challenges? The GST for NDCs include three main things, which is mitigation, adaptation and means implementation. Means of implementation mainly means finance, but also some other support in such as technical support and expertise support. So I that's all about NDCs. That was a very basic overview of what NDCs and how it functions and what it includes. Now comes the main part. What is our role in NDCs? So one confusion that has always been there and one misconception, I'll call it, is that NDCs are government documents. Other stakeholders don't have a role to play in it, right? Because these are national processes. These are the things government officials do. So what can we do in that? Well, we can do a lot. So let's specifically discuss today what is young people's role in NDCs. So like I with all the talking till now, I guess guys have received an idea on why NDCs are important. Because NDCs are our global climate goals and our common climate goals. And then NDCs also national commitments. NDCs ensure transparency and accountability in our country's climate processes. And then also NDCs are policy guidance for our country, other processes, which may not be directly related to climate policies or directly related to energy policies. So NDCs also act as a policy guidance. So before we talk about our role in NDCs, why do we need young people in the NDCs? So I think there are five reasons we need. There are more reasons, but I think these five are the most important ones. So the first thing I want to talk about here is in Paris Agreement, yeah, the NDCs are government documents. But Paris Agreement very clearly said that in order to make sure that the NDCs are a success, the NDCs are actually achieved and our common climate goal of 1.5 is actually achieved. We need to ensure a whole society, whole of society approach towards our common climate goals. A whole of society approach means when you have everyone, every stakeholder from the society doing or fighting for the same cause where everyone, when everyone's voice is heard and taken into account seriously, that is what we call a whole of society approach. So no country can achieve or make sure their NDCs are a success if they don't ensure a whole of society approach for their NDCs and the whole of the approach, young people as well. And another thing I really wanna mention here is most of the times in the climate space, we, the youth have always been seen as the youth. But I think that statement or that vision is not right because young people is a very, very diverse group. We have scientists, we have lawyers, we have academics, we have doctors, we have engineers, we have experts. Experts. So we're just not youth in the room. We have the expertise, we have the people, expert people from different sectors. So including people ensures a whole of society approach. So that's why we need young people in the NDC processes. Then also another point is, we need fresh perspectives. The climate crisis started two years ago. COP has been going on for 28 years. This is the 29th year. And the process is taking way too long to be successful. So with that, I think it is very obvious to understand that something is wrong. And something is not right in the process. We need some new discussion. We need fresh perspectives. We need new minds in this process. And who are the new minds? Young people. So that's why we need youth in the NDC processes. And another point is, we, young people do an excellent job when it comes to accountability and transparency. One issue with other stakeholders is in the though they can see what's right and what's wrong, they might not always be able to speak up. And that's a challenge we don't face. We can speak up is the wrongdoings. We can speak up against what's wrong anytime. That's the beauty of being a youth. So young people can ensure accountability and transparency in NDC processes. And another thing is, this is also a misconception, I think, both young people and other stakeholders have. We have always seen the governments and especially the governments as enemies, right? But we have to remember, the government is not our enemy. The government's goal and our goal is the same. The government also wants that the people of their country don't face the price, climate crisis on a daily basis. We also want the same thing, right? So we all have the same goal. We cannot leave each other out of the things we are doing. So it is really important that everyone comes together to have a greater shot at achieving our common goal, which is climate justice and climate resilience and protection against the climate crisis, right? And finally, without youth, there is no inclusivity in the NDC processes. And without inclusivity, NDCs cannot be a success. So I think these are the reasons young people are very much needed in the NDC processes. Moving on to the next slide. Now, here is where we can contribute. Here is where our role comes in. So these are the five gateways we have identified as entry points for young people in their countries' NDCs or in the NDCs at a national stage. So first is mapping. What's mapping? Mapping is, let's imagine your country. Let's imagine the map of your country. So we are all in facing the climate crisis, but we are not facing it in the same ways. Achinta might face the climate crisis in one, I might face it in a different way. And the crisis is different in different locations, in different areas, in different communities. So mapping is process of NDCs where all these vulnerabilities and all these challenges and all these crises are taken into account and laid out on a map. This is mostly like in easier terms, it is mapping out the challenges. So the mapping process usually identifies the problems, identify prices and identifies the challenges we have at present and then creates their NDCs. Then comes the tracking process. Tracking is when, once the NDCs are being started to be implemented, tracking is literally tracking the progress. For example, let's say, my country is doing a project that feeds into our NDCs. But what the tracking process does does is it keeps an eye on that project. I mean, it keeps an eye on the progress. It keeps an eye on the challenges of the project and it keeps an eye on the success of the project. I mean, the project is going on. Is it still on track? Is it, is there something wrong? What can be better to, what can be done better to make sure the project receives, achieves the 100% success? So that process is called tracking. And then comes, sorry, I mistakenly wrote it in opposite orders. The first one then comes the reviewing. Reviewing is when you write up a document and then you read it yourself. You give your friends the document to identify if there are any mistakes, to identify if the document is ambitious enough, to identify if the document actually meets the goals or the objectives. So that process is called the reviewing. And then comes the revising. For example, your current NDC has been going on for three years, but the climate crisis has also shifted a lot in three years. But the climate crisis has also shifted a lot in three years. The face of the crisis has changed a lot in three years, right? So we, what we used to face in twenty twenty two, we may face it in a more extreme level in twenty twenty four, right? So revising is taking in account of the changes that happen constantly in our climate and the changes and the new challenges that come in constantly. And taking those account, making sure our indices are up to date and our indices are meeting and tackling the new challenges. So that process is called revising and implementing. When everyone works together to, you know, implement and achieve their indices. So, one question I always get is, but how? How can we be a part of this technical government document, right? And this is one of the reasons not a lot of young people are very much interested in indices. First is, it's a quite a technical document and then it's a government process. And we all are not as fortunate to be engaged with our government like others. So, I think three, four key steps, you know, to make sure that you are also in the process is first to learn. Like I mentioned, indices are a bit technical and I, these might be a bit difficult for us to understand in the beginning. But keep learning and keep getting new informations about what's in your country's indices or what's happening on indices globally, right? So, learning is the first step. You cannot take part or be a part of indices if you don't learn enough. And then comes teach. Like I mentioned before, not a lot of young people have been working in the N D C processes, because not a lot of people know about it. Trust me when I say it, I can count it on my hand on how many people in my country works on indices. The number is very low. And that's because not a people, not a lot of people know about this. So it's very important for us to teach others, to provide the information to others who are interested to come in and who are interested to learn. So learn, teach and then engage. Make sure the people you are teaching, the people you're learning from, you guys are doing something together and you guys are engaging other stakeholders of the community, other stakeholders of the country in your work as well. Finally, act. Act is short, the shorter version of advocacy, communication and technology. Advocacy is when you put forward your demands and your recommendations and continuously advocate for that demand or recommendation to be adopted. And communications is passing on the knowledge to a other audience, passing on the knowledge to a broader participant or to a broader community so that everyone knows, everyone understands. And finally, use of technology. Social media is booming these days and I think social media is one of the strongest tools, you know, to convey your message. So make sure you also use social media and other forms of technologies, you know, spread the word on indices. Okay, so I think, I think, one question, another question I always get is, okay, we talk a lot about meaningful youth engagement, but how does it actually look? What is, uh, is, is my presentation visible to you all? Ah, great. So, the question I always get is, how does meaningful youth engagement look like? Especially in the N D C processes. So I think there are, sorry, five benchmarks. I think that can ensure something as meaningful or meaningful youth engagement. The first one is, we getting the seat we deserve in the decision-making tables, right? For too long, we have been denied of the space we deserve in the decision-making process. So, when you see young people in decision-making tips, that's one of the benchmark that has been met in youth, meaningful youth engagement. And the second is, young people making informed suggestions and recommendations. This might be a bit tricky. So what I mean by this is, if we are in the decision-making table without any prior knowledge on what we are talking about or without any prior knowledge of the process we are going to decide something on, that's not meaningful from our side. We have to be very well informed and we have to be up to dated on whatever we talk about. So that's what I mean by making informed suggestions. Because you not, cannot make a good decision or a valid recommendation if you don't know about the process. So, young people making informed suggestions and recommendations is also another benchmark. The third one is, young people's suggestions and recommendations are valued equally. So what happens, this is a classic example of youth washing. I'm sure you guys know about youth washing. So, this is a classic example of youth washing. So what happens is, we are invited to the decision-making tables, we are given time slots to speak. But when the decision comes out, when the adopted text comes out, we see our words are nowhere. We are just given the slot because someone wanted to tick their checkbox of youth inclusion. So, that's not meaningful youth engagement. And oftentimes, I think it's a common social norm in our society that elder people's words are much more valued than young people's words. So it can, cannot act, it cannot go on like that. Young people's suggestions and recommendations also have to be taken in as equally valuable. And our suggestions and recommendations have, also need to be reflected equally on the decision papers or in the adopted texts. So, without that, we cannot call that meaningful youth engagement. And finally, the fourth point is just representation. What do I mean by just representation? So, I live in the capital city, I have access to internet, I have connect to big people. So whenever something happens on indices, I am the only one the government calls. That's not just representation. I cannot represent someone who lives in the hill tracks or who lives in the hardest corner of my country. Their representation, representation has to be done by someone from their community. I cannot be the only youth on the table just because I am too rich or just because I have access to internet. Many people still in my country don't have access to internet. So how are we gonna bring up their voices or suggestions or their demands? So that's why just representation is of high importance. On the decision-making table, I cannot represent community alone. It has to be people from those specific communities. Is my slide visible? Oh, I think, I think someone cannot see the slides. Okay, should I go on?
Slides aren't moving, yeah.
Which side are you guys on?
So we are, we are seeing each engage. The slide is there, but it's not moving, yeah.
Oh, so you guys saw this, right?
Uh, can you maybe, uh, read?
Yeah, I'll reshare, I'll reshare, yeah. So, yeah.
And now we are on the learn, teach and get slide.
Okay, so can you, can you see this slide now? The first slide, okay, great. So, I was on the just representation part. So, like I mentioned, just representation is when appropriate representation takes place. For example, a community is being represented by someone from that community and not from someone from the city. And, and, and the last one is, young people are given support and other guidances to meaningfully contribute in the processes, you know? By this, I mean is, if I don't have access to the documents or I don't have access to the policy papers or other resources, how can I, or how can I contribute in the process? And as these are national documents, it is a common scenario that the government doesn't give access young people or common people of these documents. So it has to be ensured that we get the support and we get the access to meaningfully contribute in the process. And finally, these are four things, I think, which is really, which are really important to remember. The first one is, change is a really, really lengthy process, right? Change doesn't, long-term change don't happen overnight. And, but that doesn't mean change won't come. We have to always remember that the change will take time, but the change will eventually come. So, we cannot give up and we not detach ourselves from the works we are doing. And then another thing is, we have to stay updated. Young people have been told many things over the years by many people. And one of the reasons is, oftentimes, we are not up to date on what's happening on the globe or what's happening regarding a specific process that we are working on. So it is really important to stay updated and it is really important to keep others updated. And the third point is, not losing hope. Like I said, change is a very lengthy process. It can be a exhausting process, it can be a very tired process. And we may not be able to see success for a long time, we may not be able to feel it as well, but we cannot lose hope. When we lose hope, we lose, we lose to the polluters and we lose to climate change. We cannot do that. So don't lose hope. And finally, keep building community. We need a lot more hands-on deck to ensure climate justice. We need a lot more hands-on deck to achieve our common climate goals and to achieve one point five. So keep building the community, keep teaching others, keep learning from others, keep working together. Stay in touch. So, yeah, that's all from, and Achena, do we go to the Q and A now or afterwards?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with both. Uh, I guess we can have a short Q and A round if, if, you know, time passes. Yeah, we can have it, have it now.
Yeah, yeah.
And if there's any questions so far, please, uh, use the chat box, uh, chat, chat box or the questionnaire, uh, question and answer box as well, uh, you know, for putting out your questions. Uh, meanwhile, I, I also had a small query, uh, like, so I just wanted to understand uh, the, the first global stock tick happened last year in COP twenty eight and but, uh, but, uh, curiously, I'm also curious that why is it the, that N D Cs, uh, you know, we are revisiting the N D Cs or the new submissions are due only next year? Because when are we actually revisiting the N D Cs, like the updated N D Cs? Won't it happen in the GST session? I mean, wasn't it supposed to happen last year? I mean, it's, it's, it's a query that, you know, because we were saying that the GST is a session wherein we focus on revisiting the updated N D Cs. But now that is, you know, we only submit the N D Cs next year, how are we going to revisit them?
So, the challenge, actually, I, I understand what you're talking about. The challenge actually, actually stayed way back. The countries were supposed to submit their first round of indices by twenty eighteen, but they took a lot of time and submitted in twenty twenty. My country submitted in late twenty twenty. So that's why the timeline was a bit disrupted. If all the countries had submitted their indices by twenty eighteen, twenty twenty two would have been the perfect year for the first round of GSTs, right? But that didn't happen. So what's happening right now is, there will be annual dialogues on GST. Annual dialogues on GST happening in each, every COP. So, this process is newly introduced because if we keep doing the five-year intervals, don't, don't have time. Before twenty thirty, we have only one more GST and one more round of revision. That is not enough. So that's why there will be annual dialogues on GSTs that will look at the indices and look at the strengths and ambitions on a yearly basis.
Yes, we have some questions already. So there's a question from Vijay Kumar who asks about how about the city-level, uh, climate action plans and are these incorporated into the national climate action plans?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, cities are actually one of the key discussion points in the N D Cs, especially when it comes to mitigation, right? And also, just to focus on cities, there are different plans and packs. For example, there are the mayor's packs which specifically focus on cities and mitigation in cities and also to some extent adaptation in cities. So, yeah, they're also very well incorporated in the I'm not, I'm not very happy with the word well incorporated, but yeah, they are incorporated in the national climate action plans.
Uh, we have another question from Manjisha. Uh, uh, we, the question is, can countries, uh, escape from the goal of achieving the N D Cs? If thing, uh, uncertainty, like, you know, wars, extreme weather events happen, uh, in that country, uh, is that possible?
So, one issue with the Paris Agreement is, it's not legally binding. Any country is free to leave anytime they want. So, yeah, they can definitely escape from the achieving indices. But let's hope for the best and let's hope they don't.
Uh, then there's another, um, question, uh, from Meetha B, uh, who asks about what kind of skills youth need to be able to discuss or negotiate, uh, during climate policies?
I think, hmm, not skills, but I think what we need the most is updated information, right? Because especially, you know, in Asia and especially in South Asia, information gap is so huge. And also to some extent in Africa, right? Information is so hard to get. So that, I think that's what we need the most when it comes to, you know, being able to negotiate. We need the correct information, we need the updated information. And when you have the updated information, you what you want and you know what you want to talk about. So, yeah, I think that's what we need the most.
I guess there's, you, you touched upon like, uh, that COP is happening for the twenty ninth time this year and, um, you know, every, every year, there's, it's the same, uh, situation that, you know, we discuss, negotiate and, uh, we come out with a consensus and nothing really, uh, I mean, some things really change but in, in a very larger, uh, you know, uh, uh, view, there's no, not, not a much, uh, you know, systematic change that we have, uh, you know, come across. And there's, there's a similar question that, you know, we have done so many, so many awareness sessions regarding climate change problems and we do a lot of things, but still the problems are always on the rise and not, uh, you know, decreasing. So what's your take on that?
So, on the first part that you mentioned, Achena, is why are not being able to sink the consensus into our climate plans? That's because especially in terms of Asia, climate change is still not a priority, right? I know in my country, climate change is a secondary issue, because my country has even bigger issues to deal with. There is poverty, there is electricity, there is hunger, so many things to deal with. So, my country and like my country, many other hard world countries or global south countries have not yet been able to make climate change or the climate change, climate policy process a priority. The, and most of the countries, even the global north countries, they have not been able to sink these climate policies with their other agendas or other policies. They still see climate policies and other policies as different processes. And if we keep seeing it as different, as different, different processes, we cannot merge those and not bring in the climate policies in our day-to-day lives, right? So it is really important that we merge the policies and we think of these as on side by side and we see, see these as one. And the second part is, why even after so many awareness sessions and so many talks, the problem is increasing? Because to be very honest, I think the people who are aware don't have the power. It's, that's the most decent way can put it in. I am aware, you are aware, but we don't have the power. We can talk, we can push, but the governments are the one who have the final call, right? So, if they are the ones who are not aware, if they are the ones who are not prioritizing this issue, the issue is supposed to increase.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, w- we can always be the voice for the voiceless, but at the end, it's, it's something that we cannot control and, uh, the final decision really lies with those policymakers or governments in power. Um, I'll probably wind up with one last question, uh, from Ravi Kumar and then we can proceed, uh, onto the breakout sessions. Um, so Ravi Kumar asks about, uh, you know, in the context of India, which is a developing country and its per capita energy requirement as well as energy intensity is increasing year after year. So what's your say on how are we going to fulfill vision on developed nations by twenty forty seven and net zero by twenty seventy?
I think not only in context of India, but also many other global south countries who are still in the developing phase. I think all of us in, are in a common misconception that, yeah, fossil fuel is the way to go. Fossil fuel is the, to our development. But no, as we are still in the development process, we have the chance to, you know, adapt to new technologies, adapt to variables more and more. We don't still have that fixed infrastructure that cannot be changed or that cannot be hampered. We are still in a growing point. So it is for, for the best of us that we So it is for for the best of us that we start making the change from right now. And by the time we are uh development, we all have our renewable infrastructure set up. And after that, it's a piece of cake, you know, to reach net zero by twenty or maybe twenty sixty, twenty fifty as well. Yeah, I hope that answers your question, Ravi.
Yeah, uh I guess uh with that, we wind up with the questionnaire round for now. Uh I'll probably, we can probably move on to the next uh phase of uh breakout sessions uh over to you.
Yeah, thank you. So I I we have a very short breakout activity prepared for you. There will be three groups and three groups will be the mappers who will talk about mapping, then. The second group will be trackers who will be talking about tracking and the third group will be reviewers who will be reviewing. So in the group mapping, I. What we want is people talk about what can be some effective measures of mapping indices. And also what role you can play in mapping for indices. So this is what can be some effective measures and the second is what role you can play. Same with trackers. The first question you guys discuss is how can you track the progress of indices? And the second is what role can you play as a tracker? For example, if you are tracking the N D C. As a tracker, what can you do on or how can you recommend different things to the government or the people who are implementing the indices? And the third group is reviewers, when similar questions, what can be some effective measures of reviewing the N D C documents? And you as a reviewer, what key acts in the review process would you focus on? So these are the three groups and these are some guiding questions. Maybe take a screenshot, you know, to review the questions. Yeah, I think I think we can go to the.
Give me a moment, I guess I'm just figuring it out.
Yeah, sorry for the delay out here. Sakshi, please make Amanullah uh as a co-host. Amanullah, you can do that? Yeah, I I can definitely try. Sure, sure, sure. Sakshi, please make Mister Amanullah co-host. Amanullah, we have made you host. Sorry for the delay out here, friends. Yeah, I think I I also don't see the option to create a breakout. Or maybe what we can do is we can. Keep an open floor and take answers from the participants, right?
I got it. Sorry, this is this is a webinar, hence we can't do the breakouts because it's happening in the meetings.
Yeah, I I also, I also.
Yeah, because it's otherwise at the at the bottom itself. Sorry for the for this thing, the participants and Mister Amanullah.
Yeah, maybe we can open the floor for a few minutes to take in the answers.
Yes, that's that's better. They can raise hands and then you can just ask them to answer kind of.
Yeah. So, let's start with group mapping. So this is an open floor for all, anyone can answer. So, the first question is, what can be if some of the effective measures, you know, of mapping indices? Maybe raise your hand so that we can identify someone. Yeah, I can see Vijay's hand. Vijay, do you wanna go ahead and share your answer with us?
Yeah, yeah. Uh hi, could you hear my voice? Is it audible? Yeah, yeah. So like uh effective measures that could be there, uh it's like, you know, we should have clear quantitative analysis like indicators. Uh for comparability and we should have effective stakeholder engagement. And which also includes effective communication or like capacity building programs. Uh and we need to have uh transmit reporting and monitoring of the data, what we collect. We should be also given access to the uh third party to verify it proper. Uh and also the use of the technology like we could see now, we should we should have, you know, the uh ability to use this responsibly. Like using the G I S for the real time data and all, but those kind of softwares we have to use it much. Yeah, so and moreover, we have, we need much of financial support uh from, you know, like. As we're telling from international uh like organizations like multilateral uh support bilateral financial mechanisms. Yeah, that's my take.
Thank you. Thank you, Vijay. Thank you. I I I also agree with you. We definitely need. Specific indicative measures to, you know, properly map the challenges for our indices. So the next question is, how can young people play a role in mapping indices? I mean, what you can do as a mapper for indices? I can see M D Abdullah nine's hand. So then do you wanna share your answer with us?
Uh can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you. Please feel free.
So, thank you, Vurak, uh from Indhaka, Bangladesh. So, I'm really excited to see you and you have given a very good presentation. So, the question is, how can young people?
Play a role in mapping indices, yeah.
In N D C, yeah. So, young people is the main change maker of uh. Getting an opportunity for N D Cs. So, first of all, they can. Uh work as a collaborator, they can make a bridge between government and private organization. Especially who are actively working uh for the climate activities. Uh like in Bangladesh, there are many uh climate org- organization who are actively uh doing their work. Like uh Bella, uh as well as different other international U N organization also working. Uh in Bangladesh and they are engaging youth in different uh activities, uh like in university. We have seen that there are many clubs and environmental related clubs also uh uh. So, as a result, uh they are making different kind of strategies and competition. And they are presenting in a global stage because nowadays the internet playing a big role. And as well as uh accessible uh internet solution also creating a. New bridge among the people. So I think uh this is uh these solutions will may help. Uh role mapping N D Cs.
Thank you, thank you, Nam. That was a really good answer and I also agree, yeah. Internet and technology can be of great use for us to play a role in mapping. Thank you. Uh moving on to our questions related to tracking, the first question is, how can you? Track the progress of indices? And I can see Connect's hand. I I hope I'm pronouncing your name right. Connect, do you wanna go ahead and share your answer with us?
Hello, yes, I'm Audible.
Yeah.
Yeah, sir. So I wanna tell about like, uh I recently go through our challenge. Three twenty, uh the initiative launched in partnership within uh with the U N and which allows citizens worldwide to contribute. The data on air quality, plastic pollution and other environmental metrics which we are a smartphone app. Uh and also imagine like scaling this concept to track N D C progress where individual. Local climate actions and what is happening uh in their society or ground report. Renewable energy projects and environmental challenges like this uh will help in more for tracking. And also like crowdsourcing data, create beautiful grassroots movements. So it democratized the climate monitoring and every smartphone user which turn into a data collector. So it will be a very comprehensive insights to in and uh N D C progress. So especially in this remote undeserved area where which is like mini technologies.
Definitely, that that was a fantastic answer, Connect. Thank you. And I really like the. Statement where every smartphone user can be a data collector. Yeah, definitely. Thank you. And I think Connect's answer also answers the second question for tracking, which is what was we can play as a tracker? So not asking that, moving to reviewing. So, yeah, how can, what can? Be the some of the effective measures of reviewing indices? Don't see any hands.
I guess Ashpreet and Devakanto had points, uh I mean, they had raised their hands previously if they want to answer, we can give.
Uh uh can can you guys please raise your hands again? We cannot find you in this list. Wow, there are a hundred and forty attendees. Did not notice that before, wow. So, anyone who wants to answer this question, please feel free to raise your hand. We can pass the floor. Cannot see any hands. Okay, if not that question, maybe the second one is, what? Key aspects would you focus on when reviewing the indices if you were a reviewer? So what key aspects would you focus on? If you don't wanna speak, you can also write in the chat. I think a lot of people have been writing in the chat and they're writing great answers. Thank you, everyone. And it really makes me happy to see that we are all on the same page in learning indices. Ashpria Ashpit, I can see your hand. Please feel free to go ahead and share your answer with us.
Hi, good evening. Uh I would say as a reviewer, it's important to see um. How the plan is being implemented and also reviewing. The the emission targets, maybe they have, and also how they plan on implementing those targets. So I think that's really important. And then also reviewing how these progress progresses will be measured. Um that's another important thing to review, I believe. Um. But yeah, I would say like these two things should should be definitely prioritized.
Yeah. Definitely. Thank you, Ashpit. And I also agree, when it comes to reviewing. I also think it's really important to not only view the document, but also. The, you know, matrix of success in the document because, yeah, the document can write. Be a very good be thing to read, but what matters is what are the metrics of the document? And what are the standards of the document? So yeah, thank you for that answer. I think. We also have a lot more answers in the chat. Thank you, everyone, again for answering. And I think that sums up our breakout activity. And thank you all. I pass the floor back to Achita.
Um I I hope everyone was quite involved and engrossed in the whole session. Um we had a really great hands-on and immersive learning experience uh this time around. Because we had a lot more time. Uh unfortunately, we did not have or possess this kind of time in in our previous sessions and. But yeah, apart from all these, I guess, uh you know, we specifically spoke about how youth can actually engage. Uh in the N D C process and meaningfully contribute uh to the process. And I I guess uh today's session was a lot more relatable to some extent because. Uh you know, Amanullah, you yourself are a youth and you have represented. Communities, uh you know, the indigenous communities and the marginalized communities a lot. Also the global south, you know, you know, your country, Bangladesh, uh at climate change conferences. And so I believe, you know, it it was much more relatable to our. And so I believe, you know, it it was much more relatable to our participants because we have a very young cohort as well. And a lot of or of the youth participants are also, uh you know, kind kind of uh engaging in this climate discourse for the very first time. So uh you really broke down whole N D C process or where it started from and what is the current status and where are we looking at uh you know, in 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 the near future. So I I so it was a very comprehensive and an in-depth session of N D Cs. Um uh I guess um I I I I mostly summed it up and you know uh the uh all the all the information, I guess you have already covered, but uh apart from that, I guess you you also touched upon some very crucial and hard hitting facts about uh about that youth are the new torchbearers, they have to be the new torchbearers and it's always uh you know, that that the old age people, I mean, not old age people, but you know, the senior people uh in the in the discourse are always taken into consideration and that and it is their word that is uh you know, kind of uh the final decision uh and which which kind of hinders our whole participation and uh you know, the hard work, a lot of youth put in and actually uh bringing together a lot of recommendations, suggestions and policy uh changes that they want to uh you know uh I mean, be implemented and you know, these to to the secretary and uh the because of that low hanging texts and uh a lot many uh gaps that they put into the consensus, it really uh you know kind of not not fair fair for our 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 youth community. So yeah, I guess those are some hard you know, even those uh beyond those, we we still need to kind of, you know, engage, push uh and really kind of remind all the policymakers, decision makers or people in power to actually bring in that change and bring policies and you know, stuff that we discuss at in the negotiations truly on the ground to achieve, you know, the N D C targets that we uh talk about. So yeah, I mean, uh thank you so much, uh you know, Amanullah for joining in and we had lovely and a great session. I know there were some technical difficulties with with the breakout session, but uh regardless of that, I guess all of our participants really enjoyed and uh you had, we had a lot of comments on the box, chat box, questions. Um uh thank you once again. Um I'll also maybe quickly pass it on to uh Bhavet and Sakshi Mam if they want to uh you know, kind of give any thoughts or comments uh on on today's session or.
Uh indeed, quite insightful, Mister Amanullah. So thankful to that. And you summed it up quite well, Mister Achinte and thankful to Sakshi also for coordinating behind the curtains out here. Thank you so very much, Dean.
Um Sakshi Mam, any any final comments? Okay, um I'll probably.
She is not well and despite she is.
Yeah, yeah. Um I'll probably uh close uh today's session. Uh I have once again thank Amanullah. I thank all the participants, all the team behind putting this program together. Once again, you know, we have a big, huge group of volunteers who work beyond behind the C uh screen, uh you know, putting together the assignments, the kids. And also, you know, kind of taking care of the logistics. We thank all the partners, uh you know, who have contributed in making this program a success. Um and I wish everyone a lovely weekend ahead. Thank you so much and have a great day ahead. Bye bye.
Thank you, bye.